Alright, so I'm recording again. Me and Steve Jenner, he's not here right now, are going to create a the bank account and the entities that we've all been talking about where it's multi-signature. It's gonna have three signatures for now. That's a good number, three, just for now. It'll probably be five in the future once we get like, or we'll have multiple accounts, or however that looks. Steve wants to just kind of put money on people's cards and, you know, we'll figure out how that all looks. But for now, it's, it's gonna be a bank account that, for now, it's gonna pay for the website until we have an income and then it's gonna look different. Obviously, that'll pay back, uh, we'll probably end up doing like 50% of income goes towards paying back those, the very first people. It's first in, first out. So if you were in the very beginning working and you built up hours, those people get paid back first and so on and so forth. We will either exchange what we're putting in for either currency or just have a deal where we we fund the project and then any, because currency is time is money, it's all the same thing. So it's just a way of keeping track, right? So so we just gotta figure out, I guess, we could turn it into currency and whatever our time is worth, you know, like whatever we value that at, I think our minimal that we're, I think we're gonna minimally value it like 20 to 25 an hour. You know? So if we put in that much cash, we would just have to decide what that looks like. And when it comes to, uh, when the profits come in, are we paying, uh, what do you think Christina is, Steve's not back yet, but he'll get here. What do you think Christina? Whenever profits come in, should we pay back first in, first out? Should we pay back the people that put money in first? Because there, there might be interest people might be paying on that. I don't know, I doubt it, but what are your thoughts on that Christina?
Investors? That put in money?
Well, yeah, us, in this case, that's us.
Yeah, I mean, I'm comfortable with whoever's put, just, you know, putting in their hours. And I think I need to be better at recording hours. So
Specifically, if, if, if we're putting money in and we record that as a company debt, let's call it. And this is gonna go for a standard for receiving investment. How do we as a team want to receive investment? Are we, are, are, are we, we should probably offer to pay the cat, I mean, should we, should we pay the cash back before our time or should we? I don't know. What do you think?
I guess, I mean, that sounds reasonable to me.
I think so, because there's interest on it and stuff.
Yeah.
So someone puts in cash, we make a profit, we pay back the cash debt so that we're out of debt.
Right, and then it goes to hours.
Then it goes to us and the, yeah, so our time is our contribution and we're not considering it a debt, we're just putting it on the ledger so that we can get paid for it when it comes in. Yeah, okay, cool.
It sounds good.
Okay. So, cool. Alright, um, who else is on your agenda? Does everyone, uh, does anyone else, uh, is anyone else able to pitch in on helping? Uh, we have me, Stephen, Christina, right now pitching in. I'm gonna go work some extra time so I can put some money in to
I could potentially just, um, yeah, I'm curious about like quotes for, um, you know, how much you need.
Well, as we said, it's the site, it'll probably, I mean, I mean, I think we can just all just kind of decide what we're gonna put in. Uh, Stephen, Stephen kind of jumped in first, then Christina, then me, then I think, you know, maybe we have it handled already is, is, is the truth, but because truthfully, it probably only, a site that like we're building would normally cost probably about $2,000, that's
At the very least, I think.
At the least, yeah, at the least. But remember, we're putting in all the content. We can't even have someone else put in the content. Hey, Robert.
Hey guys.
I mean, I'd be open, I just, um, I'd need to know like yes. Just let me know, keep me posted.
Okay. Okay.
Have you spoken, Josh, have you spoken with web people already or?
Um, I have not. I have, but I haven't. I've talked to them, but I haven't gone through a full in-depth phone conversation with them. But I, um, you know, we're gonna get an overview of everything we're doing, everything we need to do, get the wireframe built and then plug in all the little stuff ourselves and have the backend built. Yeah, 2,000 is probably a minimal. So yeah, we probably still need more pitch in. I mean, but hopefully we can get it done for, you know, between all of ourselves less. And if we can have someone come in, here's the thing, if we can all call, part of this is we can call our friends and instead of them having to do 40, 80 hours, actually, I think we reduced it to 20 hours, right? We have a proposal for 20 hours right now. So we're gonna pass that this week and it's a, or we're gonna put it in. Actually, it's already put in, I believe. So it's a modification to our access agreements saying that, you know, after 20 hours a week plus being on a team or a circle, that you can have access to level three. Obviously, you have to have gone through level two, that's already in the access. You can have access to level three and you can direct the mother fund. In other words, you can make decisions whenever it comes time to update the master plan, the next steps and where the money's going. You get to be a part of that. So if someone just comes on and says, hey, I want to be a part of things and they go through the onboarding like a lot of people have already and they're just sit there, then they're not gonna be making decisions on how to direct the mother fund. Do you know what I mean? Because they don't even know what's going on. So 20 is like a minimal and we figured, you know, have to be adopted by a team, kind of gives us a, an extra layer of protection between those that are wanting to come on that are like, maybe we don't know them that well, maybe they're just trying to kind of come on and infiltrate. I mean, I hate to say stuff like that, but it's like, you know what I mean? Like, it's just something, you know, you do. So so we've decided that as a, as a standard. Uh, and I guess if it, if it passes, it passes this, this week. So, but what we can do is instead of those 20 hours, someone can come on, if, if they're a friend of ours, I've got a couple people I'm talking to right now that might take it on and say, hey, do you want to be a part of helping direct the mother fund? Plus, you're recording hours, which means you're getting paid back with the profit. So you're getting paid back for your hours, your, your, you know, we're launching. If they believe in the idea and they see the site and they go, that sounds great, then they may just want to help with that and that's gonna cost us less is the point. So if we can all kind of reach out in those, in those arenas to people we know that might be able to build a site and see if we can have them come help build it instead of having to, you know, pay a bunch of cash. And if not, we're gonna, we'll pay the cash and we'll have it done. Especially if the
I can find out with a few people on Simbi, like web developers on there.
Okay. Cool.
We probably need a deadline, wouldn't we? We need that ready to launch.
We need to get an expert web guy looking at our thing and telling us exactly what the next, like, like laying out, like the build out and the phases.
Okay.
And then we could find those specific people that have those skills to do what we need. So we need a counseling session from a, a higher-end web developer. I've got some, but I, I'm not sure what their interest is in helping, if they're just trying to help or if they're trying to get a high-paying job, or I don't know. I don't know what they're, why, why they're offering to help at this point yet. I'll find out. I guess I could just ask them to.
Yeah.
So, so as to wrap up this conversation, we're, we're deciding to just pay to get the website done. Is anyone else, uh, is anyone else able to contribute and does anyone else see, is anyone else able to reach out there and maybe has friends that they would like to see involved that could, that could be the tech arm that we don't have right now? Because we don't have a tech arm, is the truth.
Yeah. Well, we, we have some very good ones, but they're awfully busy. And it's already hard to, to upgrade our current website. So for the World Summit, we have to bring in the, the format like it's supposed to be without any changing it and then they sort of can update, update, but it's this building a new website, it's not in the range of Koyo and, and Vientiane right now.
Yeah. Yeah, and Vientiane was pretty busy when I talked to him, so I wasn't able to even get the backend. If we can copy that, that'd be great still and at this point, I don't know. Knows where it'll go. We're probably gonna use Basecamp. Okay, well, how, how should we record all this? We don't even really have a backend. Should we set up a Basecamp or?
I think you set one up already, right, Josh? A while ago?
I can set it, I can set up a Basecamp unless Paul or Brittany, unless one of you guys want to set up Notion, where we can all use it and do a tutorial. I'll set up Basecamp and do a good tutorial if not.
What was your issue with Notion?
Um, I mean, I could show it to you now, I'm just super confused about everything. I, I admit, I didn't, I didn't watch the tutorial though. I just kind of went in there and
What's the most confusing part or is it just all around confusing?
Uh, I'll share, screen. And I'll show you. So, Applications. I like how you just pop it open and it's, it's so right here, first of all, so we have, we still have things that that were, I guess, examples. So I see, I see this, next up, in progress completed. So it's kind of like tasks. Actually, that's where at, we're at, we're in tasks, okay? So when you go into a task, for example, I don't, I don't know what this is. I don't, I mean, I don't know what any of this is, like, I I created by, do I have to have that? If so, okay, there it is. If not, I can change it to anything I want here. So let's say I, I change it to multi-select. Okay, it still says created by. Oh, and then if, okay, so if I have a person, then I get to choose from the people. Okay, I get that. Okay. If I have a multi-select, then I would create options. Created by, okay. Um, how do I? Here's all the people that are able to see this one. How would I do a private one for? Like, what's the difference between tasks and what's a roadmap and meeting notes? Like, I mean, I guess I'm confused about the difference in all these different pieces.
Well, when you, you can create a new one and then you get to choose what kind of format it's in.
A new one.
Could, a new, like, team? Or workspace?
How do I create teams? That's, that's my first question.
I think you do that in the workspaces, so it would be a specific workspace for a specific team. So if you go up to workspace and then you add, push the plus sign.
Workspace, tasks and issues?
No, up more, where it says workspace. Right above flow for landowners. Then you go up one more. Now you see a flow for landowners and then you go, you see workspace right above it.
Oh, okay. Did not see it before, okay.
And then you get to pick different, like, formats of, like, how you want to organize the the information, so.
Could I do that? So that's kind of like on Basecamp, a, a work group or, or a project?
Yeah, so you just clicked, so I don't know where all the things went, but, um, you could have picked a, um, certain type of format, you know, that, that information would be presented. So instead of just like a template, like work page, it could be like a Trello board, you know, where you have the different sticky notes, like you already have. Oh, there it is. So yeah, if you don't just click, yeah, you could pick one of those. Um, and then you see, instead of workspace.
So where it is, so I'm, I'm choosing a template right now.
Yeah.
So which template should I choose? Recruiting? It's team building, it's, it's onboarding, recruiting pipeline?
Yeah, let's do that one.
Okay, screening, interviewing, okay. Try that.
Budget, yeah.
How do I invite certain people?
Well, I think since the, those workspaces to the left will be of, of, yeah, I guess you, you got it right there, but if you add them to the team in general, then they'll see all those workspaces, but the private spaces down below, you see under, yep.
Where?
Where your mouse is. You see that private? It says private right above that, get started.
Oh.
I mean, I don't know if Paul would be interested, but I'd be down to dig in more and I, I could probably create like a intro video.
Yeah, I'd like to explore a little further.
Okay. Alright, so we can have our teams go through this and set up, each team could go through this, set up their own little thing like I did Christina and Josh, right? On the private. And then we, I can set up workspaces for each group. Onboarding, Synergy Hub, master planning. Although, although those aren't private, so it makes it where everyone has access to everything, which is fine, it's just, for now, it's definitely fine. Because we decided we're all gonna kind of just move forward together, but in the future, I don't know.
Yeah, it's probably, there's probably an option where you can change that board or workspace to private in like settings or something.
Or we could just turn those, or we could turn all the groups into private. And add who we want. Okay, well, that's a start, I guess. Let's see if we can revamp that and make it clear and then we can use that.
Cool, yeah.
Is everyone else clear on Notion? Does anybody have any thoughts on that or any, anything to add before we move on?
I think just start working with it and see, yeah. Yeah. It goes, it looks pretty transparent to me, so should work, okay.
Cool. So solid plan to get the site built? Does everyone feel like they've, because this, you know, if everything goes perfect on this call, we've got a solid plan to get the site built. Does everyone feel from what we've said with, with, you know, either paying or reaching out to people that we've got a solid plan to get it built? Or do, or what? What do you guys think?
Uh, I think I missed that part, but are you going for a landing page first or what did you decide?
Yeah, I think there can be multiple landing pages. I think Jonah showed an example of, of some. Anything that gets them to the invite, the, the invite is, is, I guess, the landing page where they get a context of what's going on. It's kind of like the invite to the declaration, to the universal field, to the, so it's an invite for those who are in alignment in universally. And then from there, we, we allow people, we give them access to the solution site, we give them access to the, to a profile page and we give them the option, we kind of push them through taking a plan match. So they get matched to, um, they're gonna get matched to how they want to work together and, um, choose from some master plans that match how they want to work together and end up in a position where they can access other team members that are in alignment with them and start to get to know them and have resources for team building and for onboarding and for fundraising and for fun pooling and for all that.
Okay.
There is one thing, um, that Robert and I were talking about and it kind of circles back to marketing a bit, but, um, you know, there is something too that you put in the document, Josh, about, you know, pretty soon, then there's not gonna be just people, like, I don't think that the website's gonna be built just to basically onboard, like, single people that are just out there in the ether, you know, it'll mostly be like invite, you know, and through our networks. And so I thought, you know, maybe a little bit more leverage, you know, in where we focus our energy initially. When we actually look at like what we're doing with the full potential alliance in these agreement fields and Gaia, like, I feel like we're going to achieve more impact when we start working with other organizations. And so to really look at the user experience when we're, we're looking to like weave with other organizations, what does that look like? What's the onboarding? What's the, the process there? Um, I think is, is kind of, you know, I would even put it at a higher priority than, than the single people, because there's gonna be, having to be more like, it's gonna be more of that ambassador level that we talked about where, you know, kind of the training and getting attuned to like our flow and everything, whereas, you know, other organizations like the World Summit and Synergy Hub, they, they're already like pretty familiar with, with like how, like, we work virtually and, and just that kind of flow and they have a lot of tools that they can bring to the table too. So I just kind of wanted to put that out there.
Yeah, that's a good point. Thank you. Yeah. I mean, offering tools for like, what, like, yeah, we have to like figure out how that looks.
Well, that would also be like something really crucial to put together. I'm sure you already have it. It would just be like giving it to Christina to make it look pretty, but like a playbook or something that is useful for other organizations and like what are their pain points, you know, like, do they have, um, you know, first, a lot of people come rushing in because it's like an aligned vision, but, um, if, you know, where are some of their challenges in like coherency and actually, um, you know, achieving some of these different things in like a timely manner? Like, a lot of these organizations, we've all been working on. Like Jonah and I have been talking for a couple of years, you know, so like, what, how can we better support these organizations in, in, like, what, how does, how does the field of agreements play into that, you know? And so what resources or tools or playbook can we put together? That would be kind of like that olive branch that we're reaching out to other organizations and then we say, yeah, if you're interested, if you want to play, then here's, you know, you go through these phases and we'll have the onboarding process for those organizations.
Yep. That's well put, Brittany, thank you. We, we already, uh, start with the process, with a weaving community platform, one of the groups Transcorp Net is working on. It's wonderful to see this parallel creative thoughts going on.
Yeah, it's interesting too, when you talk about an organization because because you're, because you're having, because you're, now you're having one person speak for the whole organization if they're, if they're feeling it out. So we're assuming that they have the authority to speak for everyone. So that's the one thing that is tricky. So we have, we have two different viewpoints that we can look at this. You know, we can say, oh yeah, someone can speak for everyone else, or we can say, no, each person gets to decide individually. So there's, there's that. Um, maybe there's a way to have different people go through the same process in the same organization and come up with like, oh, I'm frozen.
Well. Uh, you know, it's like relations, you know, of their organization. So it may, it may not be like hot purse, because ultimately, some of the work that I'm doing is really shifting organizations, organizations from that hierarchy model into more of the co-creation, you know, decentralized model. And that's pretty much what we are here as well. So yeah, it, it is kind of tricky when you just have one person reaching out, but there are like specific people, like for Synergy Hub, it's like Brett is like the relationships person, you know, he's like the rep that you see out representing New Map and things like that, you know, whereas you like never see Chris.
Yeah, that's true. I mean, they're, they're
Yeah.
We're assuming that they're gonna share DNA and that they're gonna be on such the same page that, that Brett is able to do that.
Yeah.
They've given him the authority to do that. So I guess I can put that in there. Do you have authority to speak for your full organization? If not, what department do you have authority to speak for or something like that?
Yeah, that's cool.
Yeah. Thanks, Brittany. I have an intuitive response because we are also, we did a lot of outreach last six months and we noticed that, uh, talking to the gatekeepers, that it can work in, in favor in a positive way, but also in another way that you can, you, you don't come any further than the gatekeepers if they don't like it or they, they just, you know, that's it, that's where it stops. And, uh, there are, with every group, there are a lot of people behind it who can, who have to make this decision for themselves. So it's sort of a conundrum that we experienced.
Yeah. It, it really is an individual choice, because if the gatekeeper says no, someone else could still say yes.
Yes, in practice, uh, if, if, if you get there, that's the thing.
So the, the site is designed to have, to, to group, you know, 80 people onto a solution or to, you know, if we can get it scalable like that, you know, off the bat, which would be the perfect, in, in the perfect world. So if a, if an organization wants to, let's say, complete a solution, they go, yeah, we totally are, you know, we want to, a solution being, you know, a World Summit or a solution being, um, a, a village or a Synergy Hub or whatever. Okay, so here's a solution and they go, yeah, they, they group around that, some people group around that. Maybe one of those people is a company. Now we have people and a company and that company Now, we have people and a company, and that company would just be considered, that person would have to be, would have to have full authority. They'd have to be, um, a gatekeeper key holder for anyone they're saying they represent. I don't know. I don't know how that looks, if that could get messy, or if that's... Or if we keep it separate, and we say, "Okay, this is an organization. What do you need as an organization?" Like you said, "What are your pain points?" And then, they go, "Well, we need some more people." We go, "Okay, we got five more solutionaries here, and we got another $10,000 worth of funds sitting over here." And then, that could help them get there. The hard part, as long as they're all under the same decision model, if it was an open decision model, that'd be fine. They would have to onboard and train the new people.
Yeah, I think this is an opportunity for us to really look at what we're offering organizations. You know, it's more of that coherency, it's clear agreements, it's transparency, you know, opportunities, you know, first circle match and tribe match. Like, those are, are a lot of leverage points that we have, that we can offer other organizations that they'll be able to plug directly into and really benefit from.
Okay. So, maybe there's a little, a little thing that organizations go through, and if they fit the criteria, they can just match to people right away. If there's something...
That is what I think is...
Yeah. If not, if not, we give them, we give them some tools, and, and we see where they end up. Maybe they end up being able to adopt with other people easily, or maybe they have to merge with other companies.
Yeah, like honestly, I think it's wise us to, you know, it's not like we're just reaching out, wanting to work with anyone. We're being, we're using discernment, and reaching out to those that we see as players in the field to really, you know, activate the collective. And so, who are those people that we really want to play with?
Yeah, exactly.
And then, also, I like that, you know, it's not only that, because, um, you know, some organizations, they may not see the value in it, and they may not participate, and we don't want to like hold their hand through it. So, I like the sort of checking points that we have, that you're talking about, you know, to, to kind of... What word did you use? But kind of assess whether they're of, you know, if they're ready to work with us, you know?
Um, I said that we would, um, basically, see where they're at, and give them a... See where they're at, uh, by, by running them through a, um, I don't remember the word.
Yeah, it's like, yeah, it's like either a questionnaire and assessment, basically, just to, um, yeah.
Okay, cool. I like it. So, yeah, so we're, we're, we're gonna fill out the organization part of it, and that was one of our initial questions, so we need to just add that into our plan match. From the very, very beginning, like probably one of the first questions, "Are you speaking for a group of people, or are you coming in here just representing yourself?" All right. Which makes a big difference. Okay, so, solid plan, we all will be clear. Who can enter the field, access info. So, we talked about that. We talked about the twenty hours. That's, that's turned into a, the next step is we will all be clear on who can enter the field by the end of the call, access information, be on teams. So, we just have a very vague thing, you know, we wanted to just be a little careful. I mean, in our Gaia field, how we had it before was we had it, anyone can self-adopt to a team. If there's thousands of people, you know, we just have to decide... When it comes to fu, uh, our funds, that we, if we have a fund, if we have a fund, let's just say, there's a difference between people self-organizing around a solution and sharing information with us. This is what the site's designed to do. It's designed to allow people around the world to self-organize, pre-fix, uh, get a solution going, and share the results with everyone, so that we don't have to do everything. So that there's a, there's a information flow back and forth, and that can just happen. Now, if we're using a fund, our fund, if someone else is using their fund and we're matching it, who cares? We're matching it, they all decide that that works for them, and great, cool. But as we're using our fund, so the Gaia, specifically the Gaia field, who do we let into the Gaia field? How easy is that to get in, to start directing where, where we put our time and energy? Is that open? Is twenty hours of, someone comes in, they're in alignment, and they throw in twenty hours worth of work? Does that constitute, and, and then they're on a team, they've been adopted to a team, so obviously, you know, there's some other people that are agreeing that they're, you know, uh... Worth having around, or whatever, I don't know. Does that work for you guys?
I'm not sure. I think, Brittany, uh, if you can remember, we talked about it. You, you often like to go to twenty hours, but also milestones or goals.
A combination of both, you know?
Yeah.
Milestones. So, the team would, should, should be dictating milestones for their, their teams. They go, "Okay, we have three, three pairs of two people on our team of six." The team itself has a milestone. So, the roles and goals could say, "Hey, you're not an official team until you've completed some kind of milestone within a reasonable amount of time."
Yeah, or an outcome. Yeah.
And that team would be responsible, they can either carry the weight of someone they're bringing in, or they can say, "Look, everyone needs to come up and create their own milestones to be on this team." Each pair needs to show up with something. If, if, if after two months, you know, nothing's happening, then we're gonna, uh, that, that, you know, here's the milestones for each, each pair.
Yeah, like that, and also, I was just thinking, you know, like, each team may have different things that they want to outsource or delegate, you know? One of my mantras right now is, "How much can I delegate?" So, um, you know, if I were to need like some research done, like if we were trying to find like a work productivity tool, you know, like Notion or something, we could set that as like, you know, just different things that we want to outsource or delegate, like research or writing, just like simple things that, you know, on, onboarders could do, that would save us time.
That onboarders can do?
Well, the people that, you know, these people who have the twenty hours or whatever.
New members or whatever.
Yeah, so like the, the milestones may change. I mean, maybe we'll have like some standard ones, but also, I think it could be pretty dynamic, depending upon what we're all working on at the time. And, yeah, just trying to diversify it a little bit.
Yeah. What about that process for asking to switch out? What if, what if someone says, "Okay, we've got a team of six, we need to make a milestone. We would like to have a stronger team." Is that, I mean, should we make that totally perfectly acceptable for, for them to say, "Hey, we want to switch this person out, or these people out"? I mean... Or should they suggest it to the person first, talk to them and say, "Look," you know?
Yeah, I like that pro, protocol, talking to the person directly first, so it's not like a sneak attack, and then...
Of course, yeah.
Yeah.
So, there's like a guideline for accountability, um... Yeah, that's gonna be a biggest, probably one of the big ones there, because now we're talking about... You know, people get attached to their, to their position, role. But they can always be on their own team. They can do the same thing somewhere else, so... If it's a, so, especially once you're bigger, you just gather around a solution, and if you have other people with you, then you're good. But they could still get their feelings hurt. But... I guess, I don't know if you can avoid that. Part of our training, we could offer a, a course on, um, that we require people to be, with team building course. Team, teams and how to play fair, or something like that.
How to play fair.
How to play fair. Synergy, team building synergy course. Decentralized, what does that look like? What does it feel like? So, that should be a part of our onboarding, that should be an automatic thing, or we could... I think that's, I don't think that should even be like a required, uh... I think that should just be a part of the onboarding, right? Not like a choice.
Yeah, whatever we can do to like attune people to our culture.
Have these, uh, onboarding and profiles in there, imagining each individual having, uh... There's individual milestones as I, you know, moving up. Because you have to move, moving up, but moving out, and the expansion of it, you know, through passing through these milestones allows for you to continually expand out into the community. And then, a part that is just time on task, so we have that in both the individual profile, as well as then, okay, as that, in that individual's profile, what teams are they currently, you know, and what organizations are they affiliated with? And then, going into that, there's an agreement field with each organization. There, that also comes in, okay, well, how much time on task is that individual been placed into the, towards the, the team milestones? So, or the organization's milestones. So, each organization is therefore then having the, um, their, their project agreements, their own agreement field, and so, individuals come in and go into that alignment with that team, could then start gathering their, uh, time on task, and showing up for the milestones that the team is presented, which is what drew them into that space to begin with, magnetizing towards that field. With them seeing, okay, this is the team's project, the focus, this is the milestones, this is what, how I can help, uh, support reaching those milestones, coming in, and then dropping in and having a time on task section. So, you, doing it both on the individual and organizational level. Yeah.
Yeah. All right. So, let's see here. Okay, so, we are, thank you. Who can enter the field, access info, be on teams. I've, okay? Does he may want to add anything else into this, uh, mastermind? We're kind of masterminding the process now, which is nice. It's like we're doing it all together. Maybe we could have a call where we, um, where I, where I specifically, or anyone, but I've, I've, I've been doing this, so I can do it real easy. Outline, and co-create little pieces together. I mean, we're doing it on teams, which is nice. But this is also kind of nice. Did I freeze?
Only your image.
Okay.
I was saying that I'm grateful for everyone. We got a bunch of rock stars and super jokes for everything to keep flowing.
Thank you. It makes you a rock star too, Brittany.
Ah, thanks.
All rock stars.
All rock.
I think we're all ready to be in a synergy hub too. How, how's it going over there in Playa with the synergy hub, Robert?
Good. We have very creative sessions. We're now in a process, uh, of making things clear with flow charts and... diagrams. So, that's the fun part, really. I, I, I love it. And we have a big meeting coming up next Wednesday, talking to a Conscious Capital Business Group. So, we just entered their circle, the synergy circle, and we are, uh, explaining the World Summit, what it's about, that we're bypassing systems and existing borders. So, yeah, it's, it's, uh, they are very intrigued by it, but, uh, of course, they are, um, standing with their feet in two different worlds, as you know and understand, the corporate world, and they also want change. And everybody's looking around, "Hey, how are we going to do it?" So, and we sort of, yeah, helping each other in the process. So, I'm pretty cool with it. And what I, what, and I had some great, uh, meetings with Brittany this week, some creative sessions. And I think maybe because we discovered a lot, but maybe, uh, I can share it with you. I made a, an overview, just a short overview. Some points, and a, and a lot of points are already discussed here, I, I guess, Brittany, so that's great.
Cool.
Thank you.
Yeah, I can really see the each-one-teach-one badges coming into play here. So, you, you know, you complete your synergy hub training, and then you get to be able to mentor others after some certain amount of time, maybe, maybe real life experience. That way, that's, that's, that's a piece of the new culture I see. Otherwise, it, you know? So, we just move into the each-one-teach-one model. Otherwise, it, you know, it's so, it gets so hard to scale, because I'm just, I'm imagining, you know, building out all these pieces, and then it's like, just thinking, "When does that end?" And it's like, well, it definitely ends when the website's built, if it's built in a way where people can come in there, plug in, and teach one another. Otherwise, we're gonna keep doing the same thing forever. Yeah, and then, and then for now, we just, they just pay for that mentorship. And if it's us for now, great, and then once we move on and we got our own stuff, then someone else is getting paid to mentor, if we're not mentoring. Right. Anything else anyone wants to put in here today? Oh, um, preparing for the next thing, the next phases, um... Wow. Cool. I'm gonna set up Notion. With, and if anybody wants to help me, that'd be great. Brittany or Paul?
Yay! That's all I have to say for now. I'm in the car, I can help later.
So...
But, yeah.
Either one of you guys. I'll, I'll, I'll reach out to both of you, and whoever says yes at the right time, we'll, we'll, we'll do it. Sound good? Okay. So... I'm still on a, we're still on our synergy hub teams with, with our, our partners, so we could just, just keep going on what, so the synergy hub is anything, tech and, the onboarding process still needs to get looked at, so you guys are doing great, Jonah, Steven. Yeah? Do you feel like you guys are, if you're having any, anytime you, if you feel like it's not working, like you want to, you know, repartner, let's just allow for that. And it's not, not, there's no one getting kicked off any teams right now, because it's, right now, we're all one big thing. We're just in pairs of two, and we can either, or we could just say, "Okay, that's not really happening. I can start a team with someone else that's the exact same thing," which you could have two teams that are onboarding, let's just say. You could be talking to two different, you know, one person meeting about onboarding, and one person in a different way, or the same way. And then, whichever one's making progress, makes progress. And in the end, we go, "Okay, this is, this is what made progress," and we can kind of look back and see which teams are the most successful. What do you guys think about that? That sound good?
Yeah, it, it will evolve in an organic way, what feels best, what works best.
Yeah. Okay. All right, and I'll work on Paul, and I'm gonna do this, I'm gonna do two things. Okay, all right, and I'll work on Paul and I'm going to do this, I'm going to do two things. I'm going to do Notion and then Paul and Stephen. Stephen's ready to go, so if there's anyone that wants to, um, jump on a team and with him, uh, I'm going to talk to him and see. He's, he's going to be really good at onboarding. I think Christina, you were going to- Do that.
Yeah.
What's that, Jonah?
Yeah, I was feeling, uh, that with what Stephen was, uh, sharing in, looking at, bringing him in with the onboarding. Uh, I think there's, you know, that's a crucial- Point with, uh, here as well in, in Maui and synergy hub, a location here at the sacred earth temple. And so we have folks coming on into alignment, ready, you know, to, to onboard and, uh, come into alignment into our agreement field. So, you know, expediating in any way, so any way we can support that. I feel, um, you know, Stephen and I had a, uh, are in a good space, definitely a lot of resonance and coherence in it. So it's matter of us getting our timeline, um, together, you know? So we'll make sure that, uh, in the here and now, you know, moving into the, the next couple of days here. And, uh, so I'd be open to, uh, opening up the, the onboarding with, with Stephen there too and, and working through that as a team of three and onboarding.
Okay. Are you guys okay with, with, with turning, um, Tuesday, the synergy hub? This would be something that everyone would have to agree on, especially you, Robert, because you're, you're, anyway. With turning the synergy hub meetings into, should we keep them separate? We have Tuesdays and Fridays. We can turn one of these days into an all-team meeting and keep one synergy hub? Or we can just do it all, all one big thing? What do you think, Robert? Because I know you, you signed up for synergy hub specifically. Right now synergy hub is waiting on the website, Robert. And so that's why we've been kind of revamping stuff today on this call. Because we're waiting on the website, so there's a lot less to do for actual synergy hub itself.
Well, it, it's, at some point it makes sense that you, uh, because now we have for the world summit separate meetings, a unity, a core team meeting, which this is evolving to, as I can sense it. And we have different team meetings like the synergy hub and the other teams that we have. So, yeah, I think, I think, uh, just feeling into it, what works best. Uh, normally I can make the Friday calls if I planned a bit. And the Tuesday calls are sometimes a bit, uh, yeah, more difficult, but okay.
Okay.
So I, yeah.
Okay, all right. And Paul's on the phone, I'd ask him his schedule, what works with him. I'll ask him later. Cool, all right. Is there anything anyone wants to bring up? I feel complete.
Okay, Paul, how are you doing?
He's on the phone. You're okay? Just checking, man. How's the weather over there, Paul?
Sorry.
What'd you eat yesterday, Paul?
Hope it will be, something wet. Okay, thanks a lot, guys.
Thanks, everyone.
Yeah.
Bye, till next time.
Thanks, everybody.
Thank you.